I'd like to call to order the Springfield Board of Education meeting for August already 8th, 2017, roll call.
Stukey?
Here.
Anderson?
Here.
Bass?
Here.
Here.
Stand up with your pledge, please. My pledge is allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, do I have a motion to adopt the agenda for tonight? Motion. Second. Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Colonge?
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Stukey?
Yes. Approval of the July 18th, 2017 meeting minutes, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Anderson?
Yes.
Colonge?
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Yes. Approval of the July 27th, 2017 meeting minutes, is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Have to stand.
Public participation, is there anyone from the Springfield Education Association? Okay, from the classified employees? And as you pre-arranged, is there any public participation on any agenda item? Roll call here.
Mr. President, members of the board, it's my pleasure on the 3.2 to introduce a couple of people tonight for a special presentation. We are very blessed to have some very good representation to the Ohio Senate and the Ohio House here in this region. And one of the new members to the Ohio House of Representatives is Mr. Scott Lips. He along with his assistant Darlene Hicks referred tonight for a very special presentation. On a side note, it's been a joy over the last year to be able to both of these great leaders here in this community, and they have reached out and wanted you more and more for the school, whether it's recognition or partnering, and I think this is a good first step. And with that, Representative Flor is yours.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. I wish it were all true. Darlene is really good at what she does and drags me along. I am a freshman legislator, so thank you for those of you that supported me and for those of you that didn't. I want to see you outside afterwards. I own a company in Franklin called Sleep Tight Matches Factory. I'm a small business owner and that's what I've done my whole life. That's really what I look towards is creating jobs, taking obstacles out of the way. I will tell you that as a freshman legislator, I got lost. I got locked in the freight elevator once. I wrecked my car in the parking garage, so it was a really tough learning experience.
No, he really wrecked his car.
It's a hell of a learning experience. I know you don't know what you're doing. I'm proud to tell you that I did get six and a half pieces of legislation through the House Go 100. It was my first piece of legislation as a freshman, and it was honoring the fallen police officer, Bill Johnson, who was killed here in Springfield by a drunk driver. He was hit at 55 miles an hour and instantly killed. And his wife Brenda attended the ceremonies in Columbus, and it was a real honor having her up there. So what a joy that was, and it made us proud of Springfield. Let me tell you, I have five and a half schools that I'm responsible for. The half is Kings, so to give you an idea of representatives out, my inner has Mason and King, so he has one and a half, and the other Warren County is five and a half our line. We did a school budget this year. As you know, the state has lost money. We did not make budgets, so we had to have cutbacks, and some place had to be cut. So I felt it was most appropriate if schools in Cleveland get cut and schools in Warren County get money. So that's why you elected me. So Franklin got a little money, Carlisle got a little money, Waynesville got a little money, Kings broke even, Lebanon broke even, and Springfield, of all my five and a half, Springfield received the highest amount of money at about $300,000 a year for two consecutive years. So go Panthers, how about that? Another part of being a state rep is being visible in the community and meeting people. And let me tell you about me and your superintendent. I may have five and a half schools, but I have a great superintendent sitting right here. It's been an honor to give you the note, Dan. And I have talked about him and praised him and told people what I thought about him. And you guys are very blessed and fortunate to have not only a great community and great business leaders like you that I know, know Charles my full business career, but Dan has been a stand-up guy, I tell you. I do a lot of my work at the Career Center, and he has supported me lockstep. So the good news for that is he's earned every breath I have in Columbus. So I just want to tell you how impressed I am with your school system and with your leadership. With that said, I think you have new leadership. So we're going to talk about your new school president, Dan. I had the opportunity to meet Dan tonight, and I wanted to congratulate him. When I went to the Speaker of the House and told him a little bit about your school system, and Representative, Speaker of the House Cliff Roser, who put this commendation together for me, and it reads that "On behalf of the members of the Ohio House of Representatives, 132nd General Assembly of Ohio, we are pleased to extend our special recognition to Dana Good's on being appointed to the Springfield Community School Board of Education. You are deserving of high praise, for you bring to this post the wealth and experience you earned as a healthcare executive. This new role not only brings you numerous challenges and responsibilities, but also provides you with many opportunities to contribute to the development and progress of the Springfield Community School Board of Education. We are certain that as you commence your duties, you will demonstrate the same enthusiasm and civic concern for which you have become known. For Vice President of Financial and Healthcare, you've displayed a degree of confidence and commitment of which you can be proud, and such qualities have earned you the respect and esteem of all of you now. It is through the efforts of publicly spirited individuals such as you, who are dedicated to serving the community to the best of their ability, that the state of Ohio continues to grow possible. Thus with great pleasure, we commend you on your recent achievement and extend best wishes for ongoing success. Signed by the Speaker of the House, Cliff Roser, and Scott Lips, House District 62."
Roll call. Put your good side.
I don't have it, so. Thank you.
You want one?
Yeah, sure, okay.
One more.
How many times?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, can I keep going? Yes, this is so fun, I want to do it again.
Before he starts, let me say, at his swearing-in ceremony, every person that came up to see him had to see your picture first on the way up.
My father is 83 and was in a serious accident a year ago and lived for the swearing-in ceremony, so it was quite a day that I had to hold the Bible and swear me in. So, yeah, we've been very blessed, and we're blessed of talented students as well. Something you noticed is when I read that, I read it, when I was elected, I didn't wear glasses, so I couldn't read the darn thing. It's like, what's going on here? So a buddy of mine, I came home from Columbus sometime, and he said, "What happened to you?" And I said, "Well, I didn't in Columbus sometime." He goes, "No, not where have you been, what happened?" And I said, "I don't know." He goes, "Well, you've got old, gray, and fat." And the one part is I wore glasses, I had gray hair, and I gained 11 pounds because we're in meetings all day. So one of the great things we're blessed with is talented students. So each district in the state of Ohio has the opportunity to hold a student art contest every year, and one student is selected from those five and a half high schools that I have, District 62. And our winner this year was Lizzie Wedeman from Springfield High School. So her piece of artwork, by the way, it is displayed for the entire year, so we steal it from her. She wins, but we get it. And it hangs in a hallway between the State House and the Rife Center where all of our offices are. So every time, it's impossible to get from the State House to our offices without passing all of this artwork. So I get to see it every day, and we get to look at all these talented students every day. On March the 4th, Lizzie and her family was invited to Columbus, Ohio for a ceremony where they were presented with congratulations, an award, certificate, pictures, lunch, beer. I'm just kidding about that word. We had that before you got there. And this is the program for that day announcing that she was our award winner. So we are certainly proud of her. So with that, I wanted to form, by the way, just so you know the reason she's not all excited and doing cartwheels, is on March the 4th, this was presented to her, so it's a redo. "On behalf of the members of the Ohio House of Representatives, 132nd General Assembly, we are pleased to congratulate Lizzie Wedeman, a student at Springfield High School, on being named House District 62 winner of the 2017 Ohio House of Representatives Student Art Exhibition. The student art exhibition is sponsored by the Ohio House, the Ohio Arts Council, and the Ohio Art Education Association, and your artwork entitled Feet has been chosen and displayed in the lower level of the Ohio State House Connector as part of this year's event. Clearly, you have established high personal goals and worked tirelessly to reach your potential, and you can be justifiably proud of your exceptional record of accomplishment. Your success both in and out of the classroom is an excellent reflection, not only on you, but also of your family, your teachers, your school, your community, your superintendent, and of course, your state representative." Dan, I'm just adding people. That's not here, but I wrote that down. "The initiative, devotion, and hard work you've exhibited in every endeavor will greatly aid you in meeting the challenges of the future. Thus is with sincere pleasure that we applaud you on your achievement and salute you as a fine young Ohioan. Signed by Speaker of the House, Cliff Rosenberg." So thank you, congratulations.
And after this picture, if we could get two of you with the four board members, that 'd be an awesome picture, too.
Four board members.
Yeah, how do you want to do that again? Scott, how do you want to line them up? Number one up front, center.
Okay, we good? All those good. Take a stick out. Yes. I'm just going to go with that. Photo ball. Can I get my behind? See you guys still. Too cold.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Lizzie is now presenting a three-year history. That's theirs.
That was funny. Here down at M. Dan's, when I count three, I'll three. You guys ready to step back, sort of thing?
How close do I tell you how proud of her we are? She is presenting a degree in arts now at the University of Cincinnati, and I have personally commissioned, her first picture was Feet, so can you think in your head what it was up? I'll go slow. Feet. I have personally commissioned a picture now of Lips. And I'll use it in my next campaign. "On behalf of the Ohio House of Representatives, District 62, I couldn't be more honored to be part of Springfield. Thank you for the opportunity. Dan, thank you for everything you've done, and believe me, you have four weeks of parables in Columbus on par. Thank you."
Thank you. Thanks for coming.
Representative and Mrs. Hicks, thank you both so much for being here. Lizzie, congratulations. And if you want to stick around, great, we have some more presentations, but no more students, so this is a good time to go. With that, Mr. President, we're going to move on to item 3.3. Well, actually, we'll continue on work session. 3.3 is a rather simple issue, the compliance officer's policy revision. So you will see six different policies that we've added here into work session. All of these, the only change is instead of saying Director of HR or saying Director of Critical, it just says the name of the person that's going to handle the compliance issues, whether it's a 504, whether it's discrimination, or so forth. This came because Neola, who does our policies, said this is now best practice. Since the intent of the policy does not change, this does not need more approval, it's just a for-year information, and we'll submit that officially with Neola and put on our website. Any questions?
Personnel changes.
Personnel changes automatically changes in here. However, the two people that are listed throughout, Andrea and John, we don't expect personnel changes.
I think that's good.
With that, we're going to move to 3.4 as Andrea sets up for the presentation. We got a great, we have really, really great Director of Critical here, folks. Andrea's the one that actually reached out and said, "I've gotten all the information with graduation requirements, can I please speak to the board?" I said, "Got it." So we got her on the first agenda, we could. All of this information comes from ODE, and it's accurate, double and triple check, fiber and Judge Wiggins. And with that, changes in graduation. Andrea, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Schrader. It's a pleasure. Ohio has changed graduation requirements for Ohio's graduates starting in the class of 2018. So our current seniors have some options that our classes prior to the class of 2018 did not have available to them. So as the world's changing every day, ODE is trying to keep up. Our district goals for all students are to move to college or a skilled job upon graduation. In doing so, Ohio provides some flexibility for students to succeed in graduate, and in so doing, they've come up with three different pathways, and we're going to take a look at those now. There are two requirements for graduation. The first one being, in Springfield, we expect our students to complete 22 credit hours while they're in high school, and each will earn a diploma through one of three options. That first step is to gain the 22 credits, though. Every student in Springfield that graduates needs to have 22 or more credits. In the breakdown of those credits, you'll see on the slide here, we have four units of English Language Arts, four in math, three science, three social studies, one credit combined in health and PE, one half in financial literacy, one in fine arts, and the remainder of the credits are electives for students to choose from. Just for point of reference, Ohio does require students to have 20 to graduate. Springfield requires 22. Within Ohio's 20, you'll see that they also have four units of English Language Arts, four in math, three science, three social studies, one within health and PE. And they expect us to teach financial literacy, but they don't expect it to be a separate standalone class, which our board voted in, I think it was two years ago, on that. They also expect students to experience fine arts, but they don't dictate how many credits they have to have in that. So we've got that outlined for you a little bit more specifically. So in order to get to that diploma, once they get those 22 credits, they have three options, and I'll explain how those options work. The first of the options is to gain 18 points on state tests, and I've already presented to you how those state tests work, so I'm going to go quickly through those. The second option for our youth is to have an industry-approved credential and a work readiness score on work keys. And the third option for our graduates is to have a remediation-free score on the ACT or SAT. So I'll go over each of those options in a little bit more detail. Those 18 points on the state tests are culmination of English tests, math tests, science tests, and social studies tests. So in order to get to the 18 points, students must have a minimum of four points on their English Language Arts tests. They must also have a minimum of four points in their math, and each together, science and social studies, a minimum of six points combined. So those additional four points can come from any area. So if a student excels in math but rather does not excel in English or in science, the points can be made up from the math. So each test that they take is worth a total of five points. So the culmination is seven tests. We expect them to gain those points for graduation, those 18 points. So this is how they're laid out. English 1 is a ninth grade course, English 2 is a 10th grade course. Students within the math can take either Algebra 1 or Integrated Math 1, and then their second math test is either Geometry or Integrated Math 2, depending on what math track they're taking in high school. You'll see on number five here under the science option, it says Biology or Physical Science. The state started out with the Physical Science test, and then they opted to move the Physical Science test away and replace it with a Biology test. So the current 2018 seniors had the option to either do the Physical Science test, or if they didn't do that, they could take the Biology test. The state also tests in American History and American Government. So this current senior class has the option to earn 18 points on these state tests. Our current juniors that are incoming have similar options, but you'll see that on number five, the general Physical Science test is gone, and it has been replaced solely with Biology. They didn't have the opportunity to do the Physical Science test because the state updated and chose to do solely Biology for them. The testing schedule, which Mr. Pinnell handles here in our district, occurs in December and January, and those tests are typically for students who are doing retakes on their tests. Some schools have semester-long classes as opposed to year-long, and those are block scheduled, so the state offers tests in December, January for them. And then we also have the opportunity for students who want to gain more points by retaking a test to do those in the fall of the year. We typically test our main test window in April and May. You'll see summer on this slide as well, and that is for students who are, again, retaking a test. They didn't score ample points to be able to get them to the 18-point graduation level, so they have the opportunity to attend summer school and retake a test in the summer. Okay, those tests, as I said earlier, are scored on a five-point range, so those go from advanced to accelerated to proficient to basic to limited. So when I said students have to have the culmination of four points in English Language Arts as a minimum, we're looking at a basic score for both of those two years in a row. So this is the point levels for all seven tests. The class of 2018 current seniors and any students in the junior year, sophomore year, and freshman year as of today, the state doesn't change it, are able to take an AP class, and their AP tests can be taken instead of the state end-of-course test. So it replaces it. That way, our students who are taking AP courses and desire to take the AP test at the end of those tests can opt out of the state end-of-course exam. Also, we have some students who opt to take College Credit Plus in government courses as well as history courses. The College Credit Plus course can opt them out of the end-of-course exams as well. So those are substitutes, and the first time we can see those is with our class of 2018. The 2019 and beyond also have the option with the AP and the College Credit Plus. Sorry, I got behind you. And the next graduation option is industry-approved credentials and work readiness score on work keys. So this option is twofold. The student has to get the industry-approved credential, which will be working with the Warren County Career Center on, and they also have to have a work readiness score on the work keys. And the point of the work readiness and industry credentials is for students that are interested in leaving high school with a skill, going directly into the workforce and being able to continue to build on those skills to earn a living as opposed to the possibility of going on for higher education. So with those, we're looking for students to earn the credential, and within the credential, they're looking at a need for 12 points. The 12 points are broken down by the student taking a series of different tests. So for instance, if you're going into health-related fields, you might have to do a CPR test. That CPR test would be a three-point test of the 12 they need to gain for their industry credential. So that's where the 12 points are coming in, several different tests within the industry credential. And those different industries fall under 13 career fields, including agriculture, arts and communications, business and finance, construction, trades, education and training, engineering, health, hospitality and tourism, human services, information technology, law and public safety, manufacturing and transportation. The work keys test that goes with that, as I said, this is a two-part thing, you need the industry credential plus the work keys. The work keys tests are tests that are set up that include reading, applied math that's related to their field, and locating information. And within those tests for our current seniors and our current juniors, they must earn 13 on the work keys. Those students who are sophomores and younger, the score goes up to 14 for them. So the state is looking at, we're introducing these tests for our new graduation possibilities, and we're going to increase over the years as the students go through. And within those three areas of the test, the math and the reading and the locating information, they're looking at a minimum of three on each part. The third option is a remediation-free score on the ACT or SAT. Now, when we talk about a remediation-free score, we're looking at Ohio's colleges coming up with what that is. So that cutoff, which I'm going to go over here in a moment, can change from year to year. Those scores today, for this year's group of 2018 grads, we're looking at ACT tests with an 18 or higher in English, a 22 or higher in math, and a 22 or higher in reading. So in those subtests, those are the current cut scores. As I said, public colleges and universities come up with these cut scores, so these are not carved in stone, and if they do change, I will by all means come in and let you know that that has happened. The SAT cut scores for this class of 2018 are 430 for writing, 520 for math, and 450 for reading. Now, if a student goes to Springfield High School, we administer an ACT for them for free. So all juniors take the ACT at Springfield High School, and that allows them to attempt to get the remediation-free scores through their ACT here. Some of our students take an ACT prior to the junior year, and their family pays for that test. If, for instance, a student scores a remediation-free when they're a sophomore on their English but not on their math, and then they come through and they take our ACT for all as a junior, and they score remediation-free for math but not on the English on that second opportunity, so they got it on the reading the first time and not the math, and the second time they got it on the math but not the reading, they can combine those scores. So it doesn't have to be on one ACT for one sitting. They can take the ACT as many times as they desire. We pay for one, family pays for the remainder, and those scores can be combined from one test to the next. It doesn't have to be all on one test. So that's how the remediation-free works. Now, I've given you a whole lot of information, and I'm open to questions, so I know I've sped through this for you, and this is a lot to take in. This particular PowerPoint was modified from an ODE PowerPoint that will be back on the ODE site at some point in the next couple of weeks. They pulled it for modifications on their end, but they were kind enough to send me the skeleton to be able to work, because I told them that I was presenting to you all. So I was pleased that they gave you their most up-to-date, but it is still in revision at the state level.
And if you could send that to me, I'll direct it to the board and all the commissioners, too.
Absolutely, and I do have a handout. I should have given you before I started, but I'll go ahead and pass that handout now. So it's just a flyer that is created by ODE. It's a colorful one.
Oh, way to go.
There it is. So that's just a single-page flyer that the state has put out as a tool to be able to hand out to families, to hand out to students, for them to have everything condensed down from the PowerPoint onto one eight-and-a-half-by-eleven sheet.
Andrea, why were there different subjects on ACT versus SAT? There was one that was different.
Let me go back for you here. Let me try and go back.
Hold on.
Thanks, John. Okay, you'll see that the SAT and the ACT both have reading and math, the SAT has writing, the ACT has English. So the ACT English, what they call English, is writing. So the writing portion is called an English portion on the ACT.
And then their second math test is either geometry or integrated math two depending on what math track they're taking in high school. You'll see on number five here under the science option, it says biology or physical science. The state started out with the physical science test and then they opted to move the physical science test away and replace it with a biology test. So the current 2018 seniors had the option to either do the physical science test or if they didn't do that, they could take the biology test. The state also tests in American history and American government. So this current senior class has the option to earn 18 points on these state tests. Our current juniors that are incoming have similar options, but you'll see that on number five, the general physical science test is gone and it has been replaced solely with biology. They didn't have the opportunity to do the physical science test because the state updated and chose to do solely biology for them. The testing schedule which Mr. Pinnell handles here in our district occurs in December and January and those tests are typically for students who are doing retakes on their tests. Some schools have semester-long classes as opposed to year-long and those are block scheduled, so the state offers tests in December, January for them. And then we also have the opportunity for students who want to gain more points by retaking a test to do those in the fall of the year. We typically test our main test window in April and May. You'll see summer on this slide as well and that is for students who are again retaking a test. They didn't score ample points to be able to get them to the 18-point graduation level. So they have the opportunity to attend summer school and retake a test in the summer. Okay, those tests, as I said earlier, are scored on a five-point range. So those go from advanced to accelerated to proficient to basic to limited. So when I said students have to have the culmination of four points in English Language Arts as a minimum, we're looking at a basic score for both of those two years in a row. So this is the point levels for all seven tests. The class of 2018 current seniors and any students in the junior year, sophomore year, and freshman year as of today, the state doesn't change it, are able to take an AP class and their AP tests can be taken instead of the state end-of-course test. So it replaces it. That way, our students who are taking AP courses and desire to take the AP test at the end of those tests can opt out of the state end-of-course exam. Also, we have some students who opt to take college credit plus in government courses as well as history courses. The college credit plus course can opt them out of the end-of-course exams as well. So those are substitutes and the first time we can see those is with our class of 2018. The 2019 and beyond also have the option with the AP and the college credit plus. Sorry, I got behind. And the next graduation option is industry-approved credentials and work readiness score on work keys. So this option is twofold. The student has to get the industry-approved credential which will be working with the Warren County Career Center on and they also have to have a work readiness score on the work keys. And the point of the work readiness and industry credentials is for students that are interested in leaving high school with a skill, going directly into the workforce and being able to continue to build on those skills to earn a living as opposed to the possibility of going on for higher education. So with those, we're looking for students to earn the credential and within the credential, they're looking at a need for 12 points. The 12 points are broken down by the student taking a series of different tests. So for instance, if you're going into health-related fields, you might have to do a CPR test. That CPR test would be a three-point test of the 12 they need to gain for their industry credential. So that's where the 12 points are coming in several different tests within the industry credential. And those different industries fall under 13 career fields, including agriculture, arts and communications, business and finance, construction, trades, education and training, engineering, health, hospitality and tourism, human services, information technology, law and public safety, manufacturing and transportation. The work keys test that goes with that, as I said, this is a two-part thing. You need the industry credential plus the work keys. The work keys tests are tests that are set up that include reading, applied math that's related to their field, and locating information. And within those tests for our current seniors and our current juniors, they must earn 13 on the work keys. Those students who are sophomores and younger, the score goes up to 14 for them. So the state is looking at, we're introducing these tests for our new graduation possibilities and we're going to increase over the years as the students go through. And within those three areas of the test, the math and the reading and the locating information, they're looking at a minimum of three on each part. The third option is a remediation-free score on the ACT or SAT. Now, when we talk about a remediation-free score, we're looking at Ohio's colleges coming up with what that is. So that cutoff, which I'm going to go over here in a moment, can change from year to year. Those scores today for this year's group of 2018 grads, we're looking at ACT tests with an 18 or higher in English, a 22 or higher in math, and a 22 or higher in reading. So in those subtests, those are the current cut scores. As I said, public colleges and universities come up with these cut scores, so these are not carved in stone and if they do change, I will by all means come in and let you know that that has happened. The SAT cut scores for this class of 2018 are 430 for writing, 520 for math, and 450 for reading. Now, if a student goes to Springbrough High School, we administer an ACT for them for free. So all juniors take the ACT at Springbrough High School and that allows them to attempt to get the remediation-free scores through their ACT here. Some of our students take an ACT prior to the junior year and their family pays for that test. If for instance, a student scores a remediation-free when they're a sophomore on their English but not on their math, and then they come through and they take our ACT for all as a junior and they score remediation-free for math but not on the English on that second opportunity, so they got it on the reading the first time but not the math, and the second time they got it on the math but not the reading, they can combine those scores. So it doesn't have to be on one ACT for one sitting. They can take the ACT as many times as they desire. We pay for one, family pays for the remainder, and those scores can be combined from one test to the next. It doesn't have to be all on one test. So that's how the remediation-free works. Now, I've given you a whole lot of information and I'm open to questions, so I know I've sped through this for you and this is a lot to take in. This particular PowerPoint was modified from an ODE PowerPoint that will be back on the ODE site at some point in the next couple of weeks. They pulled it for modifications on their end, but they were kind enough to send me the skeleton to be able to work because I told them that I was presenting to you all. So I was pleased that they gave you their most up-to-date, but it is still in revision at the state level.
And if you could send that to me, I'll direct it to the board and all the administrators too.
Absolutely, and I do have a handout. I should have given you before I started, but I'll go ahead and pass that handout now. So it's just a flyer that is created by ODE. It's a colorful one.
Oh, way to go.
There it is. So that's just a single-page flyer that the state has put out as a tool to be able to hand out to families, to hand out to students, for them to have everything condensed down from the PowerPoint onto one eight-and-a-half-by-eleven sheet.
Henry, why were there different subjects on ACT versus SAT? There was one that was different.
Let me go back for you here. Let me try and go back.
Hold on.
Okay, you'll see that the SAT and the ACT both have reading and math. The SAT has writing, the ACT has English. So the ACT English, what they call English, is writing. So the writing portion is called an English portion on the ACT, but they're looking at the same skill sets on both of those.
The ACT that we give in the spring, we do not have them take the writing part for the ACT.
Do you have a sense for how our students are doing? Are we monitoring, assuming our students may progress against these requirements and working with them, you know, where there are potential gaps to sort of fill in? Can you maybe talk a little bit about our efforts there?
I can. Yeah, we just got our ACT scores back about a week ago and we've talked to Mr. Martin briefly about those and we'll be pulling those apart and going into detail on all of the subtests with our teachers so that, for instance, our English Language Arts Department can sit down and say, ooh, this subtest didn't look so great. We need to work on that. We might need some professional development for our team to be able to go over how we can increase those scores and what we're not hitting on the standards that we can do better on. So on our first day next week with our teachers on Tuesday, they'll be pulling apart that data and going over that and letting us know, you know what, we as a team, as a department, need a little bit more help because we noticed our ACT score was lagging behind in this particular section of the reading test.
But even beyond just the ACT and SAT portion, I mean, are we looking at the overall picture of how the students are progressing as one of those three buckets?
Yeah, and you know, I've had some in-depth conversations with Mr. Martin on this and he made the comment to me which kind of made me chuckle because there's no way that a kid that can't pass the English Language Arts 1 and the English Language Arts 2 with a 3 or better is going to score remediation-free on the ACT. So our opinion is our students have a better opportunity going for the 18-point than the ACT cuts because we feel that the state tests are a little bit easier for the students than the ACT tests. So we'll steer students in a direction depending upon what their skill set is through the guidance department.
But with this data, what we do, any modifications, any help with students, as well as the data for the report card, we're gathering all information to do another presentation to the board in the next month, month and a half. So a lot more of that information will come your way with numbers.
Okay.
This is just obviously the requirements.
Same.
We're gathering the information and we'll let you know where we're sitting.
And we're pretty excited, just as a preview to that, we're pretty excited about our ACT scores. We've always looked at the ACT scores of our students, but not all students always took the ACT. So now we have data on all students at the high school level that were juniors that took the ACT, which we've never had before. And very frankly, we had done a predictor test. We brought in a company called Torch Prep that did a practice test for our students and we scored significantly higher than what that practice test showed. So we've already taken the data from the fall of last year, shared that data with our teachers from that company, and they were able to do some pre-teaching before the ACT occurred with the sample data from that company. So we feel like we're on it and we feel like the results that we got from our juniors, very honestly, were higher than what we expected. So we were thrilled when we got that data back. It was rather a week or two weeks ago.
Is there going to be any indication on the diploma, which path they took or routes?
As of right now, no.
Okay.
But that's not to say the state won't come up with that.
Any other questions? Well, this will be an Andrew issue for a little bit. The next two items are really more informational, but go ahead. College credit plus agreements.
All right, college credit plus agreements. Those typically come out in May, but I did have one university kind of lagged behind this year, starts getting the paperwork back. So I wanted to present all of these to you all at once. The college credit plus ceiling price and floor price has increased slightly this year. We're looking at for this year, 4157 is our floor price and 16628 is our ceiling. Those are set by the state of Ohio and then we work with the universities. The universities have the option of charging the floor or the ceiling or somewhere in between. I have not been successful in negotiating below the floor. The state originally, when they came out with floor pricing, said this is the absolute lowest the university can charge. Then the state came out and said, you can negotiate it below it, but none of our partners seem to want to do that, which I can understand. Once they got that cash flow, why would they say, hey, we don't need that anymore? This year, we have students who are attending Miami University and we'll be paying them 16628. We have students attending Sinclair, we'll be paying the rate of 4157 at the floor. So Sinclair has been excellent to deal with as far as keeping the best financial package that we have with the university. I have one youngster going to Tiffin. Tiffin is the only school that we have that has a lot of floor price or ceiling price but in-between and Tiffin is charging us $140 a credit hour and Rice State is on the ceiling with 16628. So we're pleased to be working with these universities. We currently have had 321 students who have turned in schedules to the high school. As of this afternoon, we threw about half of those, building schedules for those students. Mrs. Bowing has done all of those and we've kind of called in the troops of the other counselors to lend her a hand. When we assigned her that duty, we didn't expect every 321 students, so that number just keeps rising.
You guys going to ask how that compared to your last fall?
We've scheduled every year. We did have over 430 students turn in in 10 forms in the spring and we've had 321 of them communicate back to us for fall. That's not to say we won't have more than 321. There's probably some that have to turn paperwork in. We're doing all correspondence this year electronically and it's worked out beautifully. It's a lot easier for our counselors to build a schedule from that electronic submission. We're using Google Forms, so the student goes in and says, I'm taking these classes at Miami University and these are the times and the counselors, I should say counselors, Mrs. Bowing has been able to build from this. She's done a beautiful job. She's giving about 40 a day.
If there's a large discrepancy in the cost of credit hour, does it make sense to ever say no to any?
You can't.
We'd love to do that. We're unable to.
Okay.
There could be some other universities that may pop up too. We've had students go to Cedarville in the past, it's not here in the university. So there could be some more coming down the line and they're typically near the top of the price range too, right?
UD is no longer participating. I think that they're not satisfied with the ceiling price, so they've opted out of college credit plus. Tiffin was a surprise. I think that the individual who's doing classes at Tiffin has a scholarship with Tiffin for a particular sport who just wants to study.
But we haven't seen a plateau in kind of the students sort of taking it still.
No, unfortunately not.
No, then we'll keep going up. All right, critical materials.
Okay, materials that we have for you tonight include two AP Psychology Study Guides. These are coming to you late in the game because the Human Geography course is a brand-new course that I presented to you last spring. We do have a full class there. The teacher went, he's a first-year teacher for AP. He went to AP training this summer and this particular workbook was recommended. Mrs. Franks also, who is our AP Psychology teacher, has spent a lot of time this summer going to different trainings and the AP Psychology workbook was recommended as a study guide. Those will be covered. The AP Psych was already within the fee structure that we submitted. In the AP Human Geography, Mr. Martin is going to be doing a one-time outlay to be able to outfit one classroom with those. The software and online text, Ohio's America, we are thrilled to be able to work with the Ohio Historical Society, who has developed an online text for our fourth graders and our eighth graders. So fourth grade curriculum includes Ohio history as for many years, many decades actually, and eighth grade is US history, so these will be online resources for our teachers to be able to tap into with their students. The two novels I have with me, we only have two this year. One is The Land of Stories, The Wishing Spell. This is a series, a book of a series, and this is for fifth grade for the fantasy unit. And we have two science teachers who requested A Long Walk to Water for seventh grade science based on a true story of a young man who is in an African village that gets attacked and basically the title tells it all. They have to go far to get to water and try to protect themselves. So these are just the two novels that were submitted for this year for our current youngsters. So those are the three. We have software, we have study guides, and we have two novels.
Moving on, unless there's any questions. 3.70, Ohio Improvement Process Update. We were going to have two updates this month. One has had some work since our last update. The other one needs to wait on some of these things to happen to be able to adjust budget as the other ones finance. So that is why we're only doing curriculum this month. This is a more brief presentation because you received everything the last time. This is just some things that have changed since. Thanks to Henry Cook and Chuck Wiggins.
Thank you. We're glad to be here to update you a little bit. As Dan said, these are sort of interim reports to you of what's been going on in the last three or four months from our last update. And the first slide that we're going to take you to is Develop Elementary Curriculum. Expectations for Pre-K through 5 in ELA Science and Social Studies curriculum. And over the course of this time, we've found several materials that are very beneficial for our teachers. One of them you just heard about, which is the Ohio as America for Social Studies in grades four and eight. We've also purchased Gizmos for Science and also MAP. That's not listed here, but it's also for MAP to help with project-based learning in those two subjects. And then we have the InfoBits Research Tools for grades K through six, which really covers all of our subject areas. It's to help students do research. Project Lead the Way Launch for grades four and five. As you know, we've had Project Lead the Way in our upper grades for many years. When we instituted the STEM program at four, five, it was always our intention to move it into Project Lead the Way curriculum. So we're doing that over the course of the summer and getting started with that next year. And then we've also added the Taping Club for grades one through three to help the students with their actual keyboarding skills to get prepared for all of the technology that they're going to be working with as they get older. We're on our radar right now is with all of these new purchases and with further alignment, we're planning on providing additional professional development for our teachers, not only on these purchases and how to use them, but then the fine-tuning of how that fits into the curriculum and vertically how we're going to align that. So we'll be doing that over the course, especially at this fall because we have Teacher in Service Day in September and again in November. So we're in the process of putting those plans together. Next is math and we have developed in conjunction with our math coach this year, a Balanced K-5 Math Curriculum Handbook that we've put together for all the grades, Pre-K through 5. And we've also purchased Reflex Math for grades two through five, which is an online help for students with their math skills. So when they need those quick math facts, this is the practice for them to get it right online. Again, in the future, we're going to be continuing our math coaching this year with Leslie Metling for our elementary teachers in kindergarten through fifth grade.
And we were looking to develop Science and Social Studies within the new learning standards from the state as well as those pacing guides. We're really excited to have some of the software programs that Chuck just mentioned coming to our students. As you know, the high school purchases were made in the spring for this year and we're looking at those four and eight purchases, social studies for the Ohio and the US history. And full-day PDs on September 29th and November 10th and our teachers will be getting spot checks with early release days as well. We're looking at vertical alignment across all grade levels, starting out with next Wednesday, we have some grade-level bands that will have the opportunity to meet with one another and talk a little bit about what we're doing. For instance, if it's a 6-8 band, what are we doing in sixth grade? How does that lead into seventh and how does it lead to eighth and what is eighth seeing that seventh perhaps didn't get to? So we're excited to have that time with the teachers next week for their professional development. We're also looking at furthering the development of our secondary curriculum and expectations in grades six through 12 by getting deeper into their pacing guides. We did purchase new materials for Human Geography, which I just spoke on behalf of in the previous presentation, AP English Language and Composition, which is another new class, US History, World History, and Biology. So we're working with three different companies to get reps in to be able to train our teachers on online tools and bells and whistles. And as we're moving along, we're looking at defining college and career readiness. And some of this comes in with the ongoing collaboration that we have with the Career Center for the Teacher Academy and Biomedical Sciences. It also comes along with dialogues with the Career Center on those industry-approved credential items that I brought up in the last presentation. We also plan to develop a rollout of ACT prep software, but we have been using our ACT prep class at the high school. We have a half-credit ACT prep class and we're going to try and get some marketing out there to let students who perhaps don't have time in their schedule for that class have the opportunity to utilize that software on their own time. And we were also looking at the expansion of STEM at the grade levels in seven through 12. So we did add the Biomedical Sciences and we created that physical space. I got to walk through that space last week and since that was an industrial tech lab, I have never seen it so wide open and available. It's always had tools in it and whatnot. It was exciting to go in there and see what a large space that they do have for that. That furniture came in that was purchased by the Career Center last week and was set up, so that physical space is ready. We have a new teacher coming in who has a whole lot of energy and she was trained this summer for biomedical sciences. We also have a new teacher coming in to teach a couple periods of Teacher Academy too, so that's exciting as well. And we'll continue the marketing of those programs in hopes of doubling the amount of students that have the opportunity to take those courses next year.
We have a couple of goals to update you about with our gifted students. The first one was posting the revised gifted policy. We wanted to update you that that's all been revised. It is updated on the district website and has been correct all summer. And we're also providing hard copies to all the buildings so that they will be in the buildings that parents go in there. So those are required recording methods that the state requires us, so we have all that done with the new standards that have come upon us last spring. Then the next step was we had to get in compliance with those, which we discussed last year. And you'll be happy to know that we have revised all that and we are in the process of implementing those new standards and we'll be doing an ongoing review of the data to see what that is doing in the classroom and what changes we may need to make. So all of that has moved forward. And then the goal for providing professional development, we created an online class this summer that we had many teachers participate in. That was an online book study through the Google Classroom. We've got great results from that. We've also put together our professional development calendar for the 2017 and 18 school year and we're in the process of tracking all the professional development that our gifted teachers have received since March of 2015 because we have to have all that tracked and able to account for. So we have all that put together in a notebook and now we're adding the new. The next step was to provide the staff professional development on the nature and needs and again, we had that ongoing process of the professional development that I already mentioned. All that is scheduled into that calendar that we created.
On to data for administrators. We have spent the last year providing administration with the necessary professional development materials to be able to sift through their data for student placement and instruction. So we will be getting some feedback after opening day on that. And we're also working toward providing our staff professional development on the use of their data for instruction as well. So teacher-based teams will be analyzing district and grade-level data during next Wednesday's Staff Professional Development Day. And we will continue to provide professional development for them based on their assessment of their data. So we're looking for information from them on where they feel they need more help to be able to deliver the best education to the students in their classroom. We're also looking to improve our student performance by differentiation of content and instructional methods. We've done a lot of that through Mr. Wiggins and the gifted department and we're looking to expand that to all levels of students as we do have time allotted within the PD days and to review the OTES expectations and previous results with our principals. So we're going to have the principals bring in their data from their teacher evaluations and see where are we doing well with our teachers based on their evaluation. and see where are we doing well with our teachers based on their evaluations? And where do our teachers need the most help? So that we can work with our principals and our teachers to see to it that they're getting the assistance that they need in professional development. We're also evaluating standardized assessment results to determine needed formative and substantive assessment structures. So we're pushing our teachers to formatively assess students so that we're not wasting time on content that they may have already learned previously. In so doing, we purchased a software program called Pivot, and there was an assessment module within that. Mr. Schreier actually brought this software to our attention through a rep that he knew from a previous relationship there, professional relationship. And we were excited to see the assessment module because we don't expect our teachers to be assessment writers. That's not their skillset. Their skillset is teaching, not writing tests. So we're excited to be able to bring that to our teachers. And I have to tell you that we don't always look forward to doing a goal update presentation for the Board of Education. However, it was a real pleasure for us to do this because as we go to work every day and we're going through our to-do list, I don't think we ever sit back and say, hey, what have we done? It's what are we going to do next? But this gave Mr. Wiggins and I an opportunity to reflect on what we've been able to deliver to our administrators and staff, and in so doing, what our students will be able to receive educationally. And it was a real pleasure for us to sit down and say, wow, our kids have a lot coming out of them. And they're going to be excited because we've got all different means of learning for them. So thanks for the push on this.
Clearly, there's been a lot of progress. Thank you for the hard words.
These guys, these guys are a team. These guys work not only well together, but with the arbiters, with the principals. And I think the last update was three months ago. And what you've just seen, sometimes there would be a lot of schools that would say for a year that'd be great accomplishments. We did this first three months. It's a good team. Any other questions for that? Mr. Purnell?
Two quick things. We've just got, we had talked about doing some educational assistance help for some of the schools. And we've weaned them down. The intermediate school needs about two hours of an aid time to help during lunchtime. And the junior high needs about two hours and 15 minutes of aid time to help with the lunch schedules, just so that there's continuity during lunchtime. They've struggled with that the last several years. And, you know, everybody's always willing to help, but it's nice to know that you're going to have someone in there every day, no matter what happens, when crazy things happen during the day, which that always happens. So that's what those two and 2.25 hours are for. Anybody have any questions on those? And then 3.9. We have right now, as of yesterday morning, 472 first graders enrolled for first grade, which is about 50 more than we were planning on. So we already were adding a first grade. We knew we were going to end up adding a first grade anyway because at 430, 400, maybe 35, we were thinking might show up. But with 472, we're going to need another first grade teacher. We already had that posted. But we're going to need that approved tonight so that we can start with the hiring process and get that person on board. So new teacher orientation is Thursday and Friday. So hopefully, we'll have somebody on board for that.
What does that do to our class size?
Well, we're hoping to get down to 25 to 1 in first grade.
What were we at? What were we at last year?
Well, we were at about 25 to 26 to 1.
Is it comparable to what we experienced?
It's going to be comparable.
Right, this is pushed away.
27, 28.
Right, and that's why we need to add another one. Because, you know, we've got, we have 18 right now. We'll be adding a 19. And so at 25 to 1, 19 teachers is 435 students. So that's what we're trying to, we're trying to get it down to that. And so, you know, whether we get all 470 in, 472 kids in, we don't know. There may be a few that have left that we don't know about yet. But we know we're going to need another teacher no matter what because anything over 450 then puts them over 25 in a class to 1, and we don't want that at first grade.
All right, if there's other questions?
I don't know if it applies exactly, but I know there could basically have a nice little space. So I've heard this person who put in the art room and maybe passing art and art with that.
Go ahead, Carrie.
So my question then is, next year, if the same thing happens, will we?
We will. What is, what is nice is that we have about 11 months. It's a big building. There's a lot of hooks and crannies. And we can, we can see what was great was we were able to move an art teacher, be able to put him on a card, or her on a card, and be able to make this happen.
And kudos to her. I have not met her in person, but we've had conversations on the phone. And she's been very optimistic about it and is excited, and I appreciate her facing it at the 12th hour being, you know, asked to kind of change her thoughts. So, you know, she's got some ideas, and she's working on them. We're going to share and try to do the best of that situation as well.
And we did add, we added some flexibility into the building this summer, too. We built two walls to put a conference room up by the office where the old fish tank was, used to be and all. So, well, yeah, you didn't get to see the fish tank. But the, so that way, we've got the conference room there. And so what was the conference room, all the way down the other end of the hallway, is going to have some itinerary and service teachers and stuff like that in there. So it adds a lot of flexibility into the building to get that back up there.
Thank you. All right, we have no committee reports this month, no other discussion of any other business. At this point, we turn the border over to our treasurer.
All right. I have a few items for you tonight. The first one is our July 2017 financial statements. I can actually hear myself for once. We brought in, in July, just over $10 million in revenue. That's coming from tax advances for the second half real estate. I'm also working on the five-year forecast for October. And I'm starting to look at the revenue in terms of the state foundation and what the changes from House Bill 49 and stuff are going to be doing to our budget. So I'll be bringing you guys updates on how that's going to look instead of just doing it all for October as I get those things in. I'll be bringing to you little by little. Our expenditures for July were $4,761,000 and some change. Of that, $2,328,000 for salaries. Over the next few months, you'll start to see some increases in our salaries, obviously due to the negotiated agreements. And depending on when their contract years start is when their pay will start for the upcoming year. So increases from the negotiated agreement will start to reflect. Second half of July was the first increase, and I put a little sheet out there for you guys so you guys can see how these are tiered. But the first half, the very first people for July 20th pay, that's what the small increase for July was. And then August 20th, administrators will start to get their increase. And then September 5th will be the first pay for teachers, bus drivers, everyone that's on a teacher's or student day contracts. So we do get 24 pays a year, and so you can kind of just take their contract year and divide it by 24 based off of when their contract year starts. Benefits total for July were $995,000. We did have the second half of the HSA contributions per the negotiated agreement, which is why the benefits are higher in both July and January due to the timing of when we deposit those. Purchase service were $936,000 for the month. Of that, we did have $467,000 of that cost for three bus leases as well as the Dell laptop lease purchase that we have. We didn't have CCP come out for this year, or starting for this year yet. I'm not sure yet when the state is going to do that. They haven't notified us yet. So if you remember last year, we didn't start getting deductions until like March. And then they, then they hit them in several large payments. So they haven't told us yet. Their assumption is that they're going to be getting it done sooner. But we haven't even started to receive the new biennial budget revenue yet. So the bill was signed, it has to go into effect for July 1st, but it takes several months for them to catch up and actually start giving us that revenue with the increase that was given or that was passed. So everything pretty much looks identical to June when you actually receive your foundation payments because nothing has started for that. So that, even though our July and June purchase service looked virtually identical, we didn't have the CCP costs coming out, as well as no sub-costs or our ESC billings for special ed services haven't started to come out. So even though we had an additional debt payments for the $467,000 for the bus leases, it still offset it. So we were still on virtually identical to June expenditures. Supplies for July, $125,000 and some change. Of that, $32,000 was for classroom supplies to start of the year. Those will be higher, obviously, this month in August. And some trickling from September that will still be, as the bills come in. $19,000 was for software. We had some building supply costs, starting to get the buildings ready for the school year, and then $15,000 in general supplies that were not part of classroom supplies. Our equipment, we did have a $211,000 payment come out for Chromebook replacements, and we had some small other items of equipment. We had some tennis court repairs, some excavating at Wade Field, and some other miscellaneous flooring and some law work over at EduCare. As you can see, for cash balance, as of July 31st, we had 22 million, over 22 million for all funds. And our general fund cash balance was $13,886,000. So those are posted on board docs, and after pending board approval, they will also be on the treasurer's page. So those are July financials. Any questions on that?
Remind me, on the five-year, that includes the assumption of the passage of the replacement?
I'm sorry?
The five-year includes the assumption of the passing of the replacement, let me.
Yes, those are on here. So the substitute, no, that is not included on here, no. And that won't be, I can make some assumptions on what I believe we may have as increases. But as of now, it would just be depending on whatever was built and valued at the time that the tax duplicate was created. In the first year, we wouldn't receive anything. It would be the second year.
So it has the replacement, but not any other increases?
Yes, any, no, no other increases, just the straight renewal is still on there. And then obviously, at the back of that sheet, I did, I'll go ahead and briefly say that our, the board had passed a 10% cash balance reserve policy. So we are still, this is virtually what it looked like. I've increased it for, we had a slightly higher cash balance as of June, so I've increased that for that. But you can still see that in fiscal '20 and '21 is where we're going to be not able to meet those, the 10% of our cash balance reserve. And then the other items I have for you tonight are approval of donations totaling $925 to the ROTC Scholarship Program in memory of Colonel Richard Shapiro, retired ROTC instructor at Springboro High School. And those are all listed for you. Those are also on board docs. And then we have approval to reimburse by transfer $1,490 that represents the band fund, pay-to-participate reimbursements. I did, we already did do the athletics ones, but we didn't bring that band one. And I was looking at the finances and realized I needed to bring that for you as well. And then 4.4, this is the appointment of a delegate and the alternate delegate for the OSBA Annual Business Meeting for Capitol Conference. And those are my items tonight. So you guys will have to state who you want to appoint so that when we do the motion and vote, I can list who the delegate and alternate delegate is.
I want Charles.
New guy.
So Jamie will be the delegate, and then the alternate delegate is Lisa.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
The last year paid for you.
You're really, really good. I did. I volunteered. I'll do it again. I'm not sure I'll be there, so Lisa will have to potentially step in.
Okay, is there a motion to accept 4-1 to 4-4?
Some move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Belanger?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Stukey?
Yes.
President, Super Ten's report. Thanks to the leadership of our Board of Education and your visionary thinking as far as making sure we have the leadership in Clear Creek. I am very pleased tonight to introduce to you Jessica Jones for your approval as Interim Assistant Super Ten at Clear Creek for a two-year contract. Jessica comes with a great teaching background with also administrative experience and has worked with Mrs. Porter before. So we have a great relationship starting this year. Is there a motion to approve the contract? Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Belanger?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Stukey?
Yes, she's here tonight. Welcome.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Group six, 6.1 to 6.2, call upon Andrea Cook.
These are the items previously discussed, including the AP test guides, study guides, software for Ohio's America, and the June novels.
Motion to accept items 6.1 and 6.2?
Some move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Belanger?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
We move to item 7.1 to 5, our Executive Director of District Operations.
Mr. President, members of the board, for your consideration tonight, 7.1 is the approval for the two part-time building aid positions. 7.2 is the approval of adding a first grade teacher at Clear Creek. 7.3 is approval of our personnel items minus the athletic side of the house. We're bringing to you two teachers that we hired recently. There's a change in hours. We've got some modifications in additions to some extended days for some personnel, some other summer school personnel, some classified personnel. We're getting some bus drivers as classified subs, which is wonderful. And then we've got some leave-of-obstances there.
Okay, is there a motion to accept 7.1 to 7.3?
Three.
Some move.
Second?
Yes, second.
Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Belanger?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Stukey?
Yes.
7.5 is the approval of personnel items that deal with athletics. We do have one resignation for a coach that's taking a different position. That's the only reason he has to resign. Also, he was a camp worker. And then approval of some other supplemental positions for some other coaches, assistant coaches.
Is there a motion to accept 7.5?
Some move.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Belanger?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
I'm staying. Thank you. President, move down. Board member comments, announcements.
Okay, I'd like to thank Representative Scott Lips for coming in today. Certainly appreciate the kind words and completely undeserved recognition at this point.
What's interesting, and I didn't say it earlier, is that we've been trying this for months to get into here with this agreement. He's been actually watching our board, kind of reading up on it. So we had a new board member. He came tonight and said, by the way, we're going to do this. We didn't know it was happening.
I certainly do. No, I certainly appreciate it. That was very kind, again, deserved. But I'd like to congratulate our Springboro alumni, Mr. Wiggins. It's a great honor for her. Definitely would like to thank Andrea Cook and Chuck Wiggins. That was a lot of material, but extremely well presented. Like Mr. Belager said earlier, the guys have done an incredible amount of work in three months. So the board appreciates the thought. It's excellent job. Thank you. Those are the things I was going to cover. Still, I got to cover my notes up next time. Now, I want to thank Representative Lips and obviously congratulate Mrs. Wiggins, my attempts to join their family picture notwithstanding. It was, it was nice to see them recognized and just really appreciative of Representative Lips taking the time to come and recognize one of our students that way. So that was great. And also just want to echo about the work that Mr. Wiggins and Ms. Cook have done. Again, it was clear that there has been just a tremendous amount done as it relates to those goals. And really excited to see as we continue these updates going forward, you know, how that work is paying dividends, you know, and how that work, we're doing professional development and those sorts of things, to hear about the impact it's making on our students. So great work. Appreciate all the effort.
Not to be redundant, but want to thank Scott for coming. I've seen him at the Warren County Career Center when he's come down there to make presentations. He's a real advocate of education and public schools, so nice and great. So nice and great for Lindsey. I was hoping her dad would be there.
He's actually struggling.
Oh, okay. But kudos there. And thanks to two of you for, that's a lot of hard work. And you guys are doing a great job. It's nice to see how well everyone works together and you can accomplish great things when you have that kind of collaboration. So thanks and welcome. That'd be a good thing. You two will be doing the same thing down there. So that's it.
Once again, I'm going to repeat what you three did. Thanks to Scott Lips for coming tonight and for Lizzie. Congratulations for her board. Same thing, guys. You did a great job presenting that. And I can't, you know, say enough in far as appreciation as to, you know, how you guys are working together. It goes to the fact that, you know, the whole central office is moving forward. And that's just great. Wanted to ask, we've been over to the EduCare for the biochemical lab, right? See what's going on?
It's in the old industrial tech lab in the B hallway. So we have it in the high school.
We moved, we moved, we moved robotics to EduCare. Yeah, robotics is up. I don't know. I just wondered because my team had to do a lot of fiber board or whatever it was. Okay.
Academics first.
Yeah.
Whatever the robot for.
We, we, we were helping with. Make sure the turf wasn't taken. Correct. No, it's, you're good, you're good. Congratulations, multiple board. You guys all do a great job down there.
Just a couple things, Mr. President, members of the board. Reminder, next week, things really start happening. Monday is the teacher waiver day. A lot of teachers will be in on Monday working. Some have already put that time in earlier in lieu of the 14th, 15th, the staff convocation. Hopefully, many of you can be there. 7:30 is breakfast. 8:30 starts the program. Program will be done by, what we say, it's going to be done by, I think by 10:15? No, 11:15. I think it's done by 11:15. So, and then we'll have lunch. We actually have food trucks coming. Some staff will leave and go uptown and get some, but we'll have food trucks here that they can eat. 16th, staff meetings all day in the buildings. And the greatest day of the year when students arrive on Thursday to 17th. So it's a very exciting time. We can't wait to see the over 6,000 students that will be here next week.
Win some breakfast. I want to make sure.
7:30, 15th, 7:30, 8:30, put together by our awesome Springbrough kitchen staff. Mr. President, we have no need for an executive session.
All right.